Members, please take your seats. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I know the hour has come that a quorum of this council is present. I'm asking for all visitors to please retire to the seats outside the rails. Please take all conversations outside of the council chambers. And I'm asking all those present to please put your cell phones on silent and/or vibrate. I've had a chance to work with a variety of different members of the faith-based community, and it's truly an honor and a privilege to give our invitation this morning. The chair recognizes the outstanding, hardworking, inspiring, empowering, committed Bishop Dr. Michelle Simmons of the Church Done Different Worldwide and founding and executive director of Why Not Prosper. She is here today as a guest of Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning. Greetings, Council President. Thank you for the invitation, Councilwoman Bass, and to all the other body of government and community and community partners. Let us pray. It is written that if my people that are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then they will hear from heaven and God will heal the land. God, we're coming to you today for our city of Philadelphia. We're standing right now in this right now moment, just appreciating you for your faithfulness to this city, God. And Father God, as we're asking you to heal the land, we want to just step back and ask you to heal us individually, God. I know every day I wake up with one intention, God, and that is to make the world a better place. And I know my friends and colleagues in this body of government have that same desire. So, God, we're praying even now that you will meet us at that desire, God, and that you will give us the wisdom that we need to move our city forward, God. Father God, and while you supporting us individually, God, please make sure that you are clearing out and releasing stuff from us that's no longer serving us, releasing wanting to do it for, you know, recognition, releasing wanting to do it for, you know, you know, name and fame, God. But, God, you call us to do this work, to take care of your people, God, and so we thank you. We thank you for this body of government, God, and we're praying for the resources to come down to this city from the north to south to east and the west, God. We thank you that every application that's out amongst federal government that it will be approved, God. We thanking you for that even now, and we thank you, God, that this city is filled with love, oh, God. We thank you that this city is filled with joy, God. We thank you, God, that this government and this mayor, God, they care about the people, God. So, as we are taking care of homelessness and taking care of the people that are hungry and taking care of formerly incarcerated, God, you be our strength, God. You be our joy, God. You be that wisdom, God, and we love you for it. God, we know that this prayer, I'm praying now, we're submitting it to you, and we know it's going to find a great place, a special place in your heart. So, we claim it done, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the bishop for the invocation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, October 30 of 2025. The chair recognizes Deputy Majority Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 30 of 2025 be approved.
It has been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 30 of 2025 stand approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
On behalf of the council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Brian O'Neill.
The chair thanks the council member. Leave is granted. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. There are no requests for leave of absence from the minority party.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed in the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
As the moving property second that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor and privilege of welcoming to this chamber award-winning film and TV producer and star, sixth man who won the Nelson Mandela Award for filmmaking and TV. Would you please join me in welcoming him to our chambers? His latest film is going to be on Netflix, so renew your subscriptions, and the name of that film is Jonesing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and a very well-deserved honor. Thank you for joining us today, Sixth King. Can we give him another round of applause? As there are no presentations today, the chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today, I'm introducing-
Number Thomas, council will be at ease. So, I'm going to ask for, if anybody have any sidebar conversations, if you're a guest or you're even part of this body, we're going to ask for you to like either quiet it down or please step out and have your conversation outside the chambers. It may seem like it's not noisy, but up here, you hear everything that drowns out when members are trying to talk, and so I'm just going to ask you just to respect the body and take your conversations outside the chambers. Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council. Thank you again, Council President. Good morning, everybody. Today is my honor and privilege to introduce a special guest who we're actually honoring in a resolution today. Today, I have somebody who I consider a friend, somebody who grew up in the same churches myself and Councilmember Brooks and Councilmember Phillips, which is Triumph Baptist Church, one of my high school teammates, somebody who got a full scholarship, for academic scholarship to Bloomsburg University, where he played football from 2002 to 2005. In 2006, he was a fourth-round pick by the New Orleans Saints, and he went on to play for the Saints, representing the city of Philadelphia still, wound up being a Super Bowl champion, four-time first-team All-Pro, second-team All-Pro, six-time Pro Bowler, NFL 2010's All-Decade Team, and so many more accolades that I'm not going to read all. In 2010, he signed a contract at that time to be the highest-paid offensive lineman in NFL history, and right now, he currently coaches with the New Orleans Saints, and his wife, who we can't forget, is a graduate of girls' high school, so if I didn't say that, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson would probably indict me. Ja'Ree is here today with his agent, Joel Colton, and last but not least, my personal favorite is that he is the younger brother of my labor liaison, Carmella Green. Our special guest in City Council today is none other than Ja'Ree Evans. Ja'Ree and Gerald, can you stand so we can give you a round of applause, please? Thank you, Council President, and thank you for being here today.
You're welcome. You said Dr. Phillips at once, I went to Triumph, but now he's at Salem Baptist Church in the county?
You caught that right, Council President. I didn't want to, you know, I just, as long as you caught it, Council President.
The middle neighborhoods. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant-at-arm deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication in her possession?
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I'm submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, the following proposed. An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Records and the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the city to execute a multi-year concession agreement with ancestry.com in connection with the digitizing, indexing, and public access and search of City of Philadelphia Department of Records vital records, all under provisions set forth in the concession agreement substantially as set forth in Exhibit A to this ordinance. An inordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2025 from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Water Residual Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Transportation Fund, all from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Water Residual Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Transportation Fund, all to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. An inordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and the Philadelphia Energy Authority relating to the financing of the construction, equipment, equipping, installation, and implementation of energy conservation improvements and other measures designed to reduce energy, water, wastewater, or other consumption or operating costs at specified properties owned or leased and operated by the city, approving the issuance by such authority of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more of a series to finance or refinance the cost of such project, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, authorizing the city officers to take certain actions required to issue such bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, covenating that the city will make necessary appropriations in each of the city's fiscal years to provide for and will make timely payments of the service fee and other amounts due under the service agreement, and authorizing city officials to take other necessary or appropriate actions to effectuate the purposes of this ordinance all under certain terms and conditions. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying title to 3830 Wallace Street located in Third Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And I am pleased to advise you that on November 12, 2025, I sign the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on October 23, 2025, Bill number 250654, and that on November 12, 2025, I sign the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on October 30, 2025, Bill number 250572, 250577, 250722, 250800, 250802, 250803, 250808, 250810, and 250811, and that I hereby returning unsigned Bill number 250773. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the journal. And before I go to the introductions of bills and resolutions, as I was acknowledging that Dr. Phillips went from Triumph Baptist Church to Salem Baptist Church out in the county, I really didn't get a chance to, again, just thank us for having and acknowledging Ja'Ree Evans as he go and advocate, as we advocate on his behalf to be inducted to the NFL Hall of Fame. Let's give him another round of applause, y'all. I don't want to minimize that feat, and so we're advocating, we will be fighting on your behalf to make that induction become a reality. Now for introduction of bills and resolutions. Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill for introduction today, and for the record, I was truly a triumph boy. Went there every Sunday, all the way until I was 21. You make me miss my church now.
Understood, understood. Thank you, Member Phillips. Well, the chief clerk, please read the title of the bill.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability by requiring non-resident landlords to provide verifiable contact information and a designated local contact and establishing penalties for non-compliance all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill on your behalf and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing and approving the execution of a delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and the Philadelphia Energy Authority relating to the financing of the construction, equipment, installation, and implementation of energy conservation improvements and other measures designed to reduce energy, water, wastewater, or other consumption or operating costs at specified properties owned or leased and operated by the city, approving the issuance by such authority of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, and one or more of a series to finance or refinance the cost of such project, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, authorizing certain city offices to take certain actions required to issue such bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, covenating that the city will make necessary appropriations in each of the city's fiscal years to provide for and will make timely payments of the service fee and other amounts due under the service agreement, and authorizing city officials to take other necessary or appropriate actions to effectuate the purposes of this ordinance all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing November 2025 as National Adoption Month in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gartier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have one bill on your behalf and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would Chief Clerk please read the bill and the resolution?
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of LaCount and Banbury Streets, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to approve House Bill 504, the Community Energy Act, and the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass this legislation to allow for the creation of community energy programs in Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. She recognizes Majority Whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning again. I have one resolution. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating this year's homegrown talent, including Ja'Ree Evans, Eddie George, and Eric Williams, who have been nominated and are in consideration for the Pro Football Hall of Fame class of 2026.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer five bills.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Section 14-503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay District by amending the East Falls Neighborhood Commercial Review area and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Eva Street, Dear Lee Street, Flamingo Street, Hillside Avenue, Shaw Street, Wiggert Avenue Extension, Umbria Street, Minerva Street, and Shawmont Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bryn Mawr Avenue, Winfield Avenue, Nevada Street, and the Septa Railroad right-of-way.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating Section 14-545 entitled West Fairmount Sports Area Overlay District, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Sunset Avenue, Harner Street, Port Royal Avenue, Haggies Mill Road, and Cathedral Road.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, public. Today I have three privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution celebrating the 40th anniversary of Asian Americans United, AAU, in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Pierre Robert, a beloved and legendary Philadelphia WMMR radio host and champion of Philadelphia's rock music scene.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing November 16, 2025, as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes the birthday Councilmember Ketsi Lizada. Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council President, and everyone. Today I offer one non-privileged resolution with you.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution? Sure. Council will be at ease.
My apologies, Council President. That is a privileged resolution. Okay, it is a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Danny Garcia on his retirement and celebrating his outstanding contributions to the city of Philadelphia and the Seventh Councilmatic District.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Council will be at ease. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill for introduction.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to Add Business Hour Restrictions in the Fifth Councilmatic District, amending Section 14-509, 529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fifth District Overlay District to restrict certain commercial uses and make other related changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. She recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Human Rights Day and celebrating abortion access as a human right.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harady.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution co-introduce with me and Councilwoman Ketsi Lizada, the birthday girl.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November as National Restorative Justice Month and honoring the power of art, healing, and community through the collaborative efforts of the Barnes Foundation, Mural Arts Philadelphia, and Creative Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Outstanding program, too. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution urging the city of Philadelphia to make moral investments and weigh the threat that nuclear weapons pose to all of humanity and our environment in light of the Trump administration's decision to restart testing of nuclear weapons and proposal to build a nuclear submarine right here in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Dreskow.
Morning, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution? Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Inspector Frank Bachmeier on the occasion of his retirement from the Philadelphia Police Department after 44 years of dedicated service.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one, two privileged resolutions and one bill.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions and the two
An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct Activity by adding a new section to impose a temporary moratorium on the breeding and transfer of puppies, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Nicole Fisher for her outstanding commitment to empowering Philadelphia's youth, promoting anti-violence initiatives, and exemplifying leadership through faith, family, and service.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Oh, one bill. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the courage and legacy of Ruby Bridges by recognizing November 14 as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and non-privileged resolution?
An ordinance amending Chapter 9-1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to add protections against employment discriminations on the basis of human trafficking victim status, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to take swift and decisive action to pass House Bill 1286 as an effective measure to combat human trafficking in Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. Counsel will be at ease. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out six bills with a favorable recommendation.
And thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Rules to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250831, an ordinance amending Section 14-602 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Tables by allowing basic utilities and service uses without a special exemption in certain special purpose districts, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250834, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Establish 7th District Overlay District, Restrict Certain Commercial Uses, and Make Other Related Changes, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. Bill Number 250707, an ordinance amending Chapter 19-4400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Development Impact Tax to Clarify the Exemption for Rental Housing Projects, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250848, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chu Avenue, Church Lane, and East Wister Street. Bill Number 250890, an ordinance amending Section 10-503 of the Philadelphia Code to prohibit the unlawful trading, theft, and trafficking of catalytic converters and motor vehicle parts containing precious metals, and to increase penalties, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 250891, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Sidinham Street, Vanango Street, North Smedley Street, and West Tioga Street. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee of Rules, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller for a report from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to which were referred the following bills. Bill Number 250916, an ordinance granting permission to have referred business associations to install and maintain encroachments in the nature of decorative lighting fixtures attached to existing facilities owned by the city or other entities, subject to owner's such owner's consent, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 250888, an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter to prohibit third-party restaurant reservation services from arranging unauthorized restaurant reservations with food service establishments, and to provide for definitions, prohibited acts, penalties, and enforcement, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended amid first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out one bill with a favorable
Well, the Chief Clerk, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services to which were referred the following bill. Bill Number 250849, an ordinance amending Chapter 9-1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to explicitly protect employees from discrimination on the basis of menstruation, peri-menopause, and menopause, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of these bills just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Before we go under the consideration of the calendar, we have a group of young future leaders who are joining us today from Cassidy Elementary School. I'm going to ask them to stand, and let's give them a real big round of applause. They are watching our government in action under the tutelage of Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committees with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on a second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250963, 250967, 240873, 250493-A, 250830, and 250835. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 250303, 250963, 250967, 240873, 250534, 250646, 250648, 250708, 250709, 250721, 250771, 250804, and 250887. 250956 is being withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the title of our first speaker.
May Kate Perez, Michael Ippoliti, Salima McNeil, Katia Perez, Hannah Kahler, and Jeremy Blattstein make their way to the podium.
Come on, let's rock and roll, y'all. If you heard your name called, please come to the microphone. Jeremy, come on. Excuse me, sir. Come on, Jeremy.
How we doing, Council President? Good morning. My name's Jeremy Blattstein. I'm here to address Bill Number 250967 and to talk about the Philadelphia Land Bank and everybody's favorite topic and dirty word, Councilmatic prerogative. Let's be clear, Councilmatic prerogative is a fabricated concept and, as such, is not codified anywhere. It is important to remember that nowhere in our laws does it say specific council member's approval is needed before the Land Bank Board can approve a project or even that it gets the bill put up to council. Yesterday, there was a lot of talk about codifying this and that, but we need to be clear. City Council leans on the public and local government's perception that it is a requirement that does not actually exist to drive policy. Every at-large council member can advocate for affordable housing citywide, and we shouldn't let an unwritten tradition hold back necessary projects. What is stopping the large members from fighting to build more affordable housing except Councilmatic prerogative? Let's ensure we move forward with the Land Bank mission without letting something that does not even exist hold back its potential to improve the lives of our city's hardworking and well-deserving residents. Speaking of hard-working residents, there was a lot of AMI talk yesterday, and Turn the Key is a phenomenal program that goes up to 100% AMI. And if you have two people who are city workers that make $45,000, that would be above or just below, above the 60% AMI and would still be below the 80% AMI. So going up to 100% AMI is important. So we should not change that, right? That's the whole thing, is that you have two hard-working people, a teacher making $60,000 and a sanitation worker making 40, that would be above the AMI limit, right? And they would not qualify. So let's just keep that in mind. And last but not least, we're talking about SEPTA. Unfortunately, it wasn't funded in the budget yesterday for the third year in a row. SEPTA is crucial to the City of Philadelphia. Fund SEPTA, ride their eye. And sorry, last but not least, I need to shout out my guys, John Solomon and Akeem, who are doing work. Councilmember O'Rourke mentioned them last week for SNAP. They have a food giveaway today in North Philadelphia, 4:00 p.m. on Clearfield. That's endangered. Wow, what's his Instagram? I'm blanking right now. But John Solomon, it's great what they're doing. Thank you, right, right?
Thank you very much. Next gentleman, please take the podium.
Hi, my name is Michael Ippoliti, and... Hi, my name is Michael Ippoliti, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Landau for recognizing my friend Pierre.
Can you speak into the microphone, Michael?
Thank you. On behalf of Pierre's siblings, Renee, Clarice, and Suzanne, I'm deeply honored to accept this resolution in his memory. Though born in the Bay Area of California, Pierre spent most of his life and truly found his home here in Philadelphia. He was known for his easygoing, free-spirited nature, but beneath that calm exterior was real grit and conviction. It was this spirit that helped him connect authentically with his fellow Philadelphians, whom he warmly called good citizens over the airwaves. Pierre cared deeply about people, about fairness, about the right of everyone to live a full and meaningful life. He treated everyone he met with kindness, respect, and dignity, and we are all better people, and Philly is a better city, for having known him. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
We have Salima McNeil, Katia Perez, Hannah Kahler, May Hannah Hedge, Anaya Rakopalan, Sarah Scully, and Marissa Sarnajewski also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Katia Perez. I serve as the interim executive director at the Abortion Liberation Fund of Pennsylvania. I am here today to speak in support of Councilmember Brooks's resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right. Here in Philadelphia, funding cuts at the federal and city levels have deepened longstanding gaps in our public health infrastructure. When affordable healthcare becomes harder to access, low-income mothers are the ones who bear the cost. Mothers like Sarita, a 28-year-old single mom from Philly trying to make ends meet for herself, her son who has autism, and her seven-month-old baby. While scraping by with the support of SNAP was tough enough, losing access this past month has been catastrophic, and she is using her limited funds to try to keep her family fed. After discovering an unexpected pregnancy, Sarita reached out to the Abortion Liberation Fund of Pennsylvania, and we were able to help cover the cost to help her with $400 she needed to access abortion care. As someone who grew up with a single mother of three, I know all too well the difference that $400, $300, or even $200 can make in a low-income household. Back in September, City Council authorized a hearing on the state of reproductive healthcare in Philadelphia. Now, more than two months later, that hearing still has not been scheduled. We need that hearing, not as a symbolic gesture, but to understand the impact of massive funding cuts and to identify concrete ways to protect access to care for Philadelphians. With the federal government's growing overreach in reproductive autonomy, its propaganda and misinformation about abortion care, and even its restrictions on funding for birth control, it is urgent that our city government, Mayor Parker's administration, and city councils step up. We need local leadership to safeguard our communities from harm, scapegoating, and attacks coming from federal policies that target low-income, Black, immigrant, Latina, and other vulnerable communities. At the Abortion Liberation Fund of PA, we know that the people who reach out to our helpline are the true experts in their own lives. They know what's best for them, their families, and their future. Protecting abortion access and reproductive healthcare is not just a federal issue, it's everyone's issue. I urge the city to hold the hearing on reproductive healthcare without further delay and to take meaningful action to fund and protect access to basic healthcare for all Philadelphians. Thank you.
I want to take a moment to acknowledge the students from Thomas Mifflin Elementary School from the 4th Councilmatic District. Let's give all these young people a real big round of applause as they watch democracy in action, and hopefully, look forward to all of you replacing all of you. replacing all of us in this body. Thank you very much. Floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to share a few words. My name is Ananya, and I'm here today as a concerned Philadelphia resident. As you know, Planned Parenthood is now no longer part of the Medicaid program and continues to face relentless attacks from the Trump administration. Despite Planned Parenthood no longer being able to receive Medicaid reimbursements for their care, they are continuing to see Medicaid patients and covering the costs themselves. This is not sustainable, which is why your support in moving forward with the public hearing and allocating funding to them is critical. I'm currently a PhD student at the University of Pennsylvania, and my research focuses on using biomedical data to improve the prediction and prevention of a variety of women's health conditions. If there's one resounding takeaway from the work that I've done so far, it's that, given how historically understudied and underserved these conditions are, every dollar matters. Planned Parenthood has been committed to doing the real, on-the-ground work of serving 20,000 patients a year and providing essential healthcare to them. None of the cutting-edge research on better treatments and diagnostic tools matters if there isn't public health infrastructure in place to support communities directly. Philadelphia has a real opportunity to join cities like New York, Atlanta, Baltimore, Columbus, and St. Louis in standing up for its residents by directing local funds to Planned Parenthood and ensuring access to essential healthcare services for the people who need them most. I'd like to emphasize two key asks from the council. The first being to please move forward with the public hearing initiated two months ago, and the second being to allocate local funding to support Planned Parenthood services. Thank you for your time and consideration.
May we also have Marita Pugh, Iris Olida Hernandez, Catherine Kennedy, Jasmine Hoffman, and Nikki Grant make their way to the podium.
Good morning. Thank you, council, for allowing me to share a few words. My name is Sarah Scully. I am a program assistant with Planned Parenthood Southeastern Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, Signe Espinoza, our vice president of advocacy and public policy, could not be here today, so I am delivering her remarks. As a Philadelphia resident, a Planned Parenthood patient, and someone on the front lines of this work for over 12 years, I share her deep concerns. I am here in support of Councilmember Brooks's resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right. On September 18th, city council authorized a hearing on the state of sexual and reproductive healthcare in Philadelphia. More than two months later, that hearing has still not been scheduled. As you know, Planned Parenthood was officially defunded, meaning we are no longer being reimbursed for the care we provide through the Medicaid program. This is an unsustainable model, and we need your help. Despite relentless attacks from the Trump administration, Planned Parenthood remains steadfast in serving thousands of Philadelphians who have nowhere else to turn. I urge you to stand with Planned Parenthood, the same organization that has stood with this city for decades. Please move forward withholding a public hearing so we can continue this critical conversation and confront the very real public health crisis before us. And if there is an opportunity for a mid-year transfer, we ask you to follow the lead of cities like New York, Atlanta, Baltimore, Columbus, and St. Louis, cities that have taken bold action to protect their residents by directing local funds to Planned Parenthood and ensuring access to essential healthcare for those who need it most. This is an urgent moment, and we need our leaders to step in and step up. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I think it's still a good morning. Good morning, city council. Thank you. My name is Narita Jones Pugh. I'm here as a member of Family for Safe Streets and a Vision Zero ambassador with the city of Philadelphia. Just here to appreciate and thank Councilmember Landau for the resolution for World Day of Remembrance for traffic victims here in Philadelphia. My son was killed on his bike in 2022 by a hit-and-run tow truck driver. Clearly is very challenging. We just appreciate being able to engage with the community, tell people about slowing down, how it saves lives, how important it is. Though, you know, all lives matter, it really does. It matters to us. It matters to me, and I'm hoping that it matters to everybody else. So we're just asking you to slow down again, be careful, leave early, care about each other. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna do this in Spanish and English, so be patient, we're gonna get to it.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Iraiz Hernandez Bustamante. Soy una miembro del Comité de Trabajadores de Restaurante. Estoy aquí para apoyar la resolución de la Consejala Brooks, reconociendo el Día de los Derechos Humanos y celebrando el acceso al aborto. Como un derecho humano, soy una migrante mexicana desde hace siete años. Soy madre de dos hijos, esposa, estudiante, y trabajadora.
Good morning. My name is Iraiz Hernandez Bustamante, and I am a member of the Restaurant Worker Committee. I am here to stand in support of Councilmember Brooks's resolution recognizing Human Rights Day and celebrating abortion access as a human right. I am a Mexican migrant for seven years. I am a mom of two kids, wife, student, and worker.
Cuando tenía 19 años, la vida me habló a través de una prueba de embarazo positiva. En ese momento, tenía lo que muchos estudiantes universitarios tienen: la cabeza llena de sueños y los bolsillos casi vacíos. Tan vacíos como la certeza de lo que vendría. Me invadieron... Me invadieron el miedo, la angustia, y la incertidumbre, pero también una intuición profunda de que aquella noticia marcaría el inicio de una transformación que aunque no lo sabía entonces, me haría más fuerte. México me dijo "calla." La ley me dijo "crimen." La comunidad me dijo "vergüenza."
When I was 19, life spoke to me through a positive pregnancy test. At that time, I had what many college students had: a head full of dreams and pockets almost empty, as empty as the certainty of what was to come. I was overcome with fear, anguish, and uncertainty, but also with a deep intuition that this news will mark the beginning of a transformation that although I did not know it then, will make me stronger. Mexico told me, "Don't say anything." The law told me, "It's a crime." The community told me, "You are shameful."
Entonces, sin acceso a nada seguro, compré las pastillas para tratar úlceras gástricas. Seguí un video de YouTube y me encerré. Fueron doce horas, doce horas de sangre, lágrimas, y absoluta soledad. Me levanté vacía, nadie me vio, nadie me sostuvo, y nadie me dijo "Estás a salvo."
So without any access to anything safe, I bought some pills to treat stomach ulcers. I followed a YouTube video and locked myself away. It took 12 endless hours, 12 hours of blood, tears, and absolute loneliness. I woke up empty, no one saw me, no one held me, no one said "You are safe."
Pero me levanté con mis manos todavía temblando y mi corazón hecho un nudo. Aprendí a no seguir culpándome a mí misma, a convertir mi duelo en un faro para servir a las comunidades Latinas, afrodescendientes, y hermanas migrantes que hoy caminan el mismo desierto de miedo. La resolución de la Consejala Brooks confirma el derecho de las mujeres al aborto seguro, ahora y en el futuro. Es una afirmación de compromiso con las mujeres para vivir sus vidas, tomando sus propias decisiones sin tener que seguir las imposiciones que el gobierno pone sobre ellas.
But I got up with my hands still shaking, my heart in knots. I learned not to punish myself anymore, to turn my grief into a bacon, to serve my Latina, Black, and migrant sisters who today walk the same desert of fear. The resolution of Councilmember Brooks confirmed women's rights to access abortion safely, now and in the future. It is an affirmation of women's commitment to live their lives and making their own choices, not having the choices imposed on them by their governments.
I survived, but I don't want others just survive. I want everyone to live. We need you to bow yes on this resolution to continue to allow access to abortion rights, now and forever. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Stephanie Evans. I stand here on behalf of the Families for Safer Streets of Philadelphia, also for the Bicycle Coalition, and also in reference of Vision Zero. We stand here today in homage and memorandum to also Latanya Byrd, who worked tirelessly behind the scenes. We thank this administration for the 25 miles per hour on Broad Street. We thank you for the speed cameras. My son, Robert, was killed five years ago outside the 35th District. He was mangled, and they wanted to close the casket, as some of you know my story. But today, we triumph again and again for the sister of brotherly love, the city of brotherly love, and the sisterhood of affection. I just cannot thank you all enough for those who worked tirelessly behind the scenes, the unsung heroes that passed the bill, that did the legislation. So for the World Day of Remembrance, we also pay homage to Landau for... Just keep thinking of us. We won't stop, we can't stop. But remember, you need to stop at every light. The life you save might be your own. Those speed bumps, those cameras, have our loved ones' blood on them. So remember, the life you save may be your own.
Hello, everyone. Hello, city council members. I would like to thank Councilmember Ru Landay. My name is Jasmine Hoffman. As some of you may know, I am the founder of bill number HB988. It's called J-Alert. It's a hit-and-run notification system for pedestrians and cyclists in PA in honor of my eight-year-old niece, Gianna Powell, who was walking home from school in 2016 when she was struck by a car and hit and killed. We've been working with Senator Williams for nine years and Representative Morgana Cissis to get this bill passed. World Day of Remembrance is worldwide, across different states of celebrations of victim lives that's no longer here due to getting hit by a vehicle. World Day of Remembrance let families like myself get together and celebrate and give updates, be around love and others that can relate, given mental support and encouragement to take it day by day as we advocate to make the streets safer. Thank you, and thank you, everyone. Have a good one.
We have Catherine Kennedy, Nikki Grant, May David Alexander Jenkins, Daniel Mosher, Maritza Padua, Joelle Schofield, and Vivian Chang also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, council members. My name is Nikki Grant, and I am the co-chair of the Abortion Liberation Fund of Pennsylvania, whose board I have been proud to be a member of for the past five years. As we all know, we are living in a dark timeline where we are increasingly under threat from our own federal government. We are facing disastrous cuts that will impact access to education, food, and healthcare. In particular, reproductive healthcare is under constant threat with as recently as this weekend, Senate Republicans attempting to hold the ACA hostage in order to implement more abortion restrictions. I'm here today because I believe the city of Philadelphia can and should be the first line of defense for its residents in the face of these federal threats. An attack on affordable reproductive healthcare is an attack on the most vulnerable Philadelphians, including low-income mothers, people who are housing insecure, people who are food insecure, and justice-impacted people. It is the responsibility of this city to protect its vulnerable residents. We can start by holding a hearing on the state of reproductive healthcare in Philadelphia as soon as possible so that we can better understand the impact of the cuts and prepare for this impending public health crisis in the city that we love. I also urge council to direct funding to the Abortion Liberation Fund so that we can continue to assist low-income residents in accessing abortion care. Thank you to Councilmember Brooks for introducing the resolution to recognizing abortion access as a human right, and thank you all for your time.
Catherine Kennedy. Good morning. Thank you. We got it now. Catherine Kennedy. Okay. Good morning. Thank you, council, for allowing me to share my perspective as a provider of sexual and reproductive healthcare in Philadelphia. My name is Catherine Kennedy, and I'm a lead clinician with Planned Parenthood Southeastern Pennsylvania. I've worked at Planned Parenthood for over six years across two affiliates, and I'm so honored to be able to provide this care for our Philadelphia community. Every day, I choose to work at Planned Parenthood because our healthcare model is both evidence-based and patient-centered, which results in high-quality and safe care. And because I've seen the impact and difference Planned Parenthood care makes for the city and community of Philadelphia. I recently cared for a patient who had an abnormal pap smear during a routine annual exam. She came to us for a colposcopy, a procedure used to diagnose precancerous and cancerous cervical cells, because all other providers were prohibitively costly. Without Planned Parenthood, she wouldn't have been able to afford a colposcopy, and her cervical cancer would have gone undiagnosed. Our affordable and timely care allowed her to start her treatment as early as possible. Unfortunately, this patient's story is not unique. I've cared for many patients who receive life-altering diagnoses, and they choose Planned Parenthood because they can get an appointment much sooner than other providers, even same-day appointments. Planned Parenthood's dedication to our patients extends beyond our provision of healthcare. As many of you know, in September, Planned Parenthood was defunded, blocking Medicaid funds to Planned Parenthood. But we have been shielding patients from harm by covering the costs of Medicaid to ensure our community has access to life-saving care. to lifesaving care. But this is unsustainable, and the consequences for patients will worsen over time. Across the country, this has meant covering an estimated $45 million in care at no cost to patients. These options are frankly unacceptable, and Philadelphians deserve better. Philadelphia has an opportunity to join cities in standing up for its residents by directing local funds to Planned Parenthood and ensuring access to essential health care services for all that need them most. I urge you to move forward withholding a political hearing so we can continue this critical conversation and confront the very real public health crisis we're facing, and to support Planned Parenthood so that we can continue to provide essential care for thousands of Philadelphians who rely on us. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members and guests. Steve Alexander Jenkins, and I rise to address Resolution 250967. We say that we are committed to a vision of Philadelphia where home is not just the roof over one's head, but a foundation for dignity, possibility, and belonging. Yet, every week, we convey "fee simple, enter address here" to the Philadelphia Land Bank. Of the roughly 8,000 properties placed under the Land Bank's purview when it was created in 2013, as of April this year, only 1,000 of those has been redeveloped. This is unacceptable, and the time is now. Now, to convert idle public assets into public goods. Now, to direct the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to unlock those lots which are shells of potential, creating real affordability. Sustainable homes for the 5,191 souls counted on your rosters amongst us who are homeless, and in aid of the shortage of over 64,500 housing units today. Beloved, I stand in a kind of ponderance, weighing not only the numbers aforementioned, but the lives represented in each one of them. I remind you, this is a city not marked by the skyline, but by whom it shelters and whom it leaves trembling at the edge of the night. In a city with a name that requires us to enter into a covenant of love as a command we have so to do, I beg you to prove it. Brothers and sisters, it is said, if you love me, feed my people. That is not poetry breathed into the obligations of man by scripture. You know this. It means feed my people. Feed them with opportunity. Feed them with sustainability. Feed them with housing that they can afford. Feed them with the dignity that comes from knowing that they will not be priced out of their own lives, and feed them now. Members, I pray thee, affordability must go to those most in need houses and households at the bottom of the income ladder. Families who are not just one maintenance emergency or rent hike away from being homeless, pray, preserve existing houses first. Repairing, adapting, safeguarding homes where folks already live, pray. Public land and public investment must serve public purpose. No more idle lots left as wasted potentials for families. Wait for a place to call home if we accomplish this, brothers and sisters. We will not merely have adopted units to the housing stock currently held in the Land Bank, but we will have reaffirmed at a time most dire in need that in Philadelphia, belonging and affordability go hand in hand.
Morning, everyone. My name is Daniel Mosher. I'm the Deputy Director of State Strategies at All Above All. We are an abortion-forward reproductive justice organization that envisions a world where all people, regardless of their socioeconomic status, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or geographic location, have complete autonomy over their reproductive health. It is to that end that I'm here today to loudly voice our support for Councilmember Brooks' resolution commemorating Human Rights Day and stating unequivocally that abortion rights are human rights. The United States is party to several international treaties that call for the protection of access to abortion care services. These include the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination, the Convention Against Torture, and other cruel, inhuman, or degrading treatment or punishment. These treaties are considered the supreme law of the land under Article VI of the United States Constitution, and it's the responsibility of each level of government to ensure that they are adhered to. However, in an attempt to avoid international accountability, the federal government is withdrawing from the United Nations Universal Periodic Review Process to avoid scrutiny over the long string of human rights violations they are forcing onto this country, whether that is through cruel abortion bans that exacerbate maternal morbidity, or the inhumane treatment of our immigrant neighbors who are being snatched off the streets without due process. All Above All applauds the leadership of this council, including Councilmember Brooks, as well as the work of Philly District Attorney Larry Krasner, who's been vocal about the human rights violations being wrought on our immigration system, and traveled to Geneva last week to speak out on the U.S.'s nonparticipation in the UPR process. As we commemorate World Human Rights Day, let me say once again that every single level of government has the obligation in this moment to stand up and speak loudly in defense of our human rights. I appreciate the bold leaders in this room today, both elected and advocates, stepping up to do just that. Thank you.
We have Maritza Padua, Joelle Schofield, Vivian Chang. May Nicole Fisher, Six King, and Juanita Metzger also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Maritza Padua. I am the Vice President of Policy and Strategic Initiatives at Women Against Abuse, and today I am speaking in support of Councilmember Brooks' resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right. As Philadelphia's comprehensive domestic violence service provider, Women Against Abuse serves people whose rights to make decisions about their own bodies has been stripped away by an abusive partner. Some are compelled to carry pregnancies resulting from rape or birth control sabotage. Others remain trapped in dangerous relationships because pregnancy deepens financial dependency on their abuser. When reproductive health care becomes harder to access, it strengthens an abuser's control and leaves survivors with fewer choices and greater risk. For our clients, abortion access is not an abstract policy issue. It's a matter of safety and autonomy and survival. That's why we stand in strong support of Councilmember Brooks' resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right, because for survivors of domestic violence, control over one's body is the first step toward freedom from abuse. Unfortunately, recent federal and local funding cuts have left major gaps in Philadelphia's public health infrastructure. Affordable reproductive health services are disappearing, especially in low-income communities and communities of color. When care becomes scarce, it is a survivor of domestic violence, it is survivors of domestic violence, predominantly women isolated from their support networks, who pay the highest price. City Council authorized a hearing on the state of reproductive health care back in September. Two months later, it still hasn't been scheduled. I urge this body to move forward quickly to protect some of Philadelphia's most vulnerable members. Abortion access is a human right, and for many survivors of domestic violence, it is a lifeline. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Joelle Schofield. I'm an excess counselor, and I'm representing the Abortion Liberation Fund of PA. Today, I'm speaking on Councilmember Brooks' resolution to recognize abortion access as a human right. As an excess counselor, it is my job to assess someone's circumstances and to help them access funds to get the abortion that they need. We also fund working-class mothers who don't qualify for assistance, struggling to make ends meet with the rising cost of living. Most recently, federal funding for programs like SNAP have been withheld. The very program designated to feed families and millions of children is being used as a political weapon. This is forced starvation and should be considered a human rights violation. One of the core values of reproductive justice is that parents have the right to raise children in a safe and healthy environment. Is a country where forced starvation can occur safe, surely abortion should be considered a human right when the very food meant to keep a child alive can be taken. It is why now more than ever, we should declare abortion access as a human right. Let Philadelphia be a safe haven for people seeking lifesaving care. Please consider funding the Abortion Liberation Fund in our city budget every year. I'm asking city council members to stand with conviction and to recognize access to abortion as a human right because it is a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Vivian Chang, Executive Director of Asian Americans United, and I rise in support of Councilmember Landau's resolution celebrating Asian Americans United's 40th anniversary. I just want to share a little bit about our history and talk about what's facing us today. So when we were founded in 1985, some of the first issues as an organization, we fought for quality public education. And now, unfortunately, the district is planning to close schools again. So we see that even as we rise above and we are able to uplift children and families out of these issues, that doesn't mean they end. So we keep going. Another issue that we faced in our early years was fighting against substandard housing. A lot of folks, especially Southeast Asian refugees, were being resettled into housing that was not livable. And today, we see that renters are being crushed by an affordability crisis, and so many people in our city are forced to live in dirty, broken-down housing. We cannot live this way. Throughout our years, we've also fought against fare hikes for SEPTA youth cards. SEPTA is in crisis. We've supported Southeast Asian refugees coming to Philadelphia and seeking safety, and now these same folks are being kidnapped and disappeared by ICE. I don't mean to be a bit of a downer, but as I was reflecting on our history today, I realized there's a lot to celebrate, and there's a lot more to go. So we appreciate the celebration, and we want to revel in it, and we know that these are, unfortunately, historic times. I hate living in historic times. And history does repeat itself, but we can also break the cycle. So many of the issues we talked about in these chambers and in our communities are things that people just like us every day are fighting for. So it is beautiful to be here. Some of the youth, we are just reflecting on our history. We've interviewed some of the kids from our very first summer camp 40 years ago, who are now like creating schools in Cambodia and, you know, becoming principals and teachers. And it's just really, really lovely. So I want to thank Councilmember Landau and the chambers for celebrating. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Kate Perez. Our legal system is built on the premise of due process. The Juvenile Justice Center is trying alternative ways to rehabilitate children who have been accused of crimes and awaiting trial. This is a completely different tactic than our sister city Tel Aviv implements. Like most apartheid states, there are two different legal systems, where settlers are subject to civil law and the native Palestinians are subject to military law, in courts that are ran by IOF soldiers who practice administrative detention, a system where our sister city allows armed militants to arrest and indefinitely detain any Palestinian on the possibility that they might possibly one day maybe commit a crime, holding them without charge, evidence, or trial in torture camps. With recently-released hostages sharing stories of being hung from the ceiling, electric torture, the release of dogs into their cells, being forced to watch videos of Gaza's destruction, some being lied to that their families were killed, and some being released to find that their entire families actually were slaughtered during their wrongful imprisonment. The same apartheid court system has now passed the first reading of a bill to allow for the execution of Palestinian hostages, making any one of the more than 9,000 hostages targets for execution, creating formalized concentration camps. If we want to keep our children out of prison, how can we normalize and facilitate the exchanges of politicians, PPD, and class trips with the only state in the world putting children through military court, holding at least 900 children that would be up for execution if this bill passes? Getting used to a genocide is the quickest way to ensure its completion, and Philadelphia's partnerships only help to normalize and facilitate colonization. The Juvenile Justice Center is connected to our school district because the right to education is a universal right of a child, something our sister city has stripped away as they bombed every school left in Palestine. And now, instead of going to classes, children wait in line at soup kitchens and have been blown up by explosives left disguised as food. Today, the occupation is still impeding aid flow, and we have Philadelphians leaving as soon as next week to act of protective presences in the West Bank, a place where settler violence is increasing. How will we ensure that the bombs we send don't kill our citizens? We need an arms embargo now. Free Palestine.
We have Nicole Fisher, Nicole Fisher, Six King, Juanita Metzger, May Kelly Flanney, Marco Giarini, and Cole Appelman also make their way to the podium.
My name is Juanita Metzger. I'm here today to ask for a hearing on sexual and reproductive health, and to ask that the city help to fill the gap in our funding left by the extreme cuts to Medicaid that passed this year. I first came to Philly Planned Parenthood after my barrier protection failed. I wanted a prescription for the medications that prevent HIV and syphilis after possible exposure. They got me in on an emergency basis because they understood that those medications have a 72-hour window for efficacy. I encountered protesters, but escort volunteers got me safely past them. The doctor didn't judge or belittle me. She simply listened and discussed my options. Planned Parenthood is on the front lines of helping to prevent people from contracting potentially lifelong illnesses which weaken society by reducing the productivity and health of the population. Cities that don't budget for prevention will pay several times over when its citizens become ill. I've continued to return to that location for my STI testing, and now I volunteer as a clinic escort. So many different kinds of people walk through our doors: men, women, couples, mothers with their teenage daughters. Maybe they've come for cancer screening, for testing, for protection, or for a prescription for necessary medication. For a few, they're making an incredibly difficult decision, one which only those individuals are qualified to make for themselves. Most people who pass by nod. Some thank us for being there, and a few ask how they can help. Many tell us that our services are vital to the community. Occasionally, someone will come up and tentatively ask if we treat everyone, if we offer testing, if we do more than abortions. The answer to all three questions is yes. A surprising number of people don't realize we offer cancer screening and STI testing, as well as birth control and abortions. Many men in particular ask this of us, and they're always thankful to hear their welcome at Planned Parenthood. Many go straight in to make appointments. Everyone I've met who works at Planned Parenthood in any capacity has been kind, compassionate, passionate, and committed to the principle that human beings have a basic right to make our own decisions about our health care and to expect to be given the information necessary to do that. We are grateful that we can provide that service to our fellow Philadelphians.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Six King, and I am CEO of Six Degrees of Media. And I'm here today this morning to honor the resolution of Councilwoman Isaiah Thomas. The Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center School, on the celebration of its 20th anniversary of Carp Denim, the resolution highlights and commemorates all judges, students, and participants who contribute to the longstanding impactful education and rehabilitative program within the juvenile justice system. Carp Denim is fundamentally about the changing of the trajectory of court-involved youth through education, mentorship, structure, and positive adult engagement. In the words of my grandmother, when you're born, you look like your parents, but when you die, you look like your decision. And whether it was my decision to bring some of the biggest Hollywood productions here so that young people can see a different trajectory, or whether it was my decision to spark the reform movement to free rapper Meek Mill, and so that we move forward in how probation is wielded among people across the nation of America, or whether it was my decision to open a safe space in Manayunk, where in the '60s, my grandmother was assaulted for civil rights. I was able, along with my brother Angelo Parker, to open up an establishment where we were not wanted during the civil rights movement, so that young people that we work with have a safe space to come, to work, to have the American dream that we all dream of. This is our decisions as people. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. And remember, when you're born, you look like your parents, but when you die, you look like your decisions. It is up to all of us to make those decisions that will grant our youth a brighter future, and make sure you come to best kept secret down in Manayunk. It is the American dream of us.
And Six King. I want to thank Member Jones for taking the moment to acknowledge you, to give you flowers, because oftentimes, we know the leaders are out there actually doing the work and not looking for praise. And so congratulations on receiving the Nelson Mandela Award, but also just commend you for all the work that you are doing on behalf of inspiring our young people to be great here in this city of Philadelphia. You keep up the good work as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
But could you talk about how you was on a jet ski with a tuxedo on? But keep up the good work, though, young man.
Listen, I just want to take this moment to thank you, Council President. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you to a lot of you who I've seen during my time sparking the reform movement, that freed rapper Meek Mill, and that whole trajectory. A lot of times, when we are doing the work, we're not coming up front to participate in the accolades. And so I'm one of those people that were doing the work to make sure that we have a better future for our youth. So thank you for encouraging me to come forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Nicole.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nicole Fisher. Good morning, councilwomen, Cindy Bass, the 8th District, and all the members of the city council, community partners, and every supporter who is here today. First and foremost, I want to thank God, because once, without God's guidance, strength, protection, and alignment, we wouldn't be standing here receiving this incredible honor. We want to thank our family, our children, who are our motivation every single day, and especially my husband, my coach, my number-one supporter, and my partner in every mission we take on. You stood here with me every high, every low, every training session, every setback, and every breakthrough. Your belief in us helped carry us through through this moment. To our entire community, the people who watched us grow, supported the dream, and are here today to witness this honor, thank you. Everything we do is for you and because of you. Knockout Gun Violence was created with one purpose, to give our youth a fighting chance at life. Our program uses boxing as a vehicle, not just to build champions in the rain, but champions in their own lives. Through discipline, mentorship, structure, and love, we open our doors to youth who are at risk of slipping through the cracks, youth who needed a safe place, and youth who needed someone to believe in them. At Happy Hollow Recreation Center, Knockout Gun Violence became more than just a boxing program. It became a family. It became an outlet. It became hope. And not just for the boys, but for the young ladies, too, who stepped into that gym ready to work, ready to learn, and ready to prove that strength comes in many forms. They showed us with courage, and we gave them a place to grow. They showed us what courage and gave us, gave them, we gave them a place to grow, to feel seen and to feel powerful. This mission means everything to us. It's not just about punching bags and gloves, it's about showing our youth that they can fight for their future and win. If life has taught us anything, it's that the journey is bigger than boxing. This is about giving back, pouring into our children, and creating a safe, positive environment where our dreams are protected, not destroyed. It's about teaching discipline, confidence, leadership, and hard work. It's about reminding our kids that no matter what and where they are, where they come from, they deserve a future filled with possibilities. We always tell our kids, "You don't have to fight in the streets, you can fight for a better life." This resolution today is not just honoring our work, it's honoring their courage, their effort, and their hope. When I won my first women's championship, most people didn't know the truth behind the scenes. While training for that title, while preparing mentally, spiritually, and physically, I was still showing up for the community. I was still running sessions with the kids. I was still mentoring, still training them, still pouring into them, even when I was tired, even when the pressure was high. There was days I could go from work to training, to the gym, to the youth, and then home to make sure my family and I had what they needed. It was a lot to carry, but love carried me through the process. Purpose carried me through it all. We also coached other fighters, including our twin boys, and their very first ones drew Knockout Gun Violence at the Happy Hollow Recreation Center. Watching those kids, especially our sons, step into that ring and courage come through, Victoria showed us exactly why this work matters. Their victories were proof that when you pour into the youth, they rise, they win, they transform. Because we knew, if we wanted to let them, if we wanted them to keep fighting for their future, we had to keep fighting for ours. We believed that everything would work out for their good, and it did. That championship wasn't just a win, it was our win, the community win, and the kids win, and the cities win. This honor doesn't just belong to us, it belongs to every child who walked into that and our program, volunteer, and all those who volunteered and stepped in, every parent who trusted us, and every supporter who believed change was possible. Thank you for seeing the value of what we do. Thank you for acknowledging the impact, and thank you for standing with us. And we continue this mission to build safer, stronger, and more empowered communities. We don't just fight in the rain, we fight for our city, our youth, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I see them belts? Could you raise them belts up?
Good morning, councilmembers and everyone else. My name is Darrell Wilson. I'm one of the coaches at the Happy Hollow Boxing Gym. I'm here to bring, bring forth comments about Nicole Fisher. You see, I was blessed with five brothers and no sisters. And so, the real blessing out of that is that I come from a strong mother. She not only showed me, but taught me how to look for the attributes of a strong woman in leadership. And as I exert during my time at the gym, I really do see the strength and the patience and the persistence, not to mention, her drive is impeccable. The one most important thing that really concerns me is how she cared for the children. Cared means so much to her. If I can be perfectly honest, parents really don't care how much you know until they know how much you really care about their children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. Thank you for inviting me down. My name is Nate. Good morning, council. Thank you for inviting me down. My name is Nate Mr. Miller, former WBA cruiserweight champ of the world, 95, and I won the title. The 18th greatest of all time. You can put my name in and pictures and everything pop up. But basically, I'm here to tell the youth, never give up on your dream. If you, if you're out to achieve something, if you believe you can achieve, never give up, and never, never stay around them negative people. A lot of people told me, say, "Oh, man, you wouldn't be a world champion," but I fooled them. You can do it, too. Thank you, council. Thank you for the building that he is, that they are putting up in the spring. Thank you very much.
We have Darryl Schuler, Kelly Flanney, Marco Giarini, Cole Appelman, and Obona Hagens also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, City Council. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Nicole Fisher and our program at the Happy Hollow Gym. I'm 100% in support of that. Being myself, a former fighter myself, boxer, coming from a boxing family, we had the honor of having a boxing gym out in West Philly called James Shulman Memorial Boxing Gym, named after my brother. And today, I just wanted to stand here to tell y'all that the Young Lady Program, these programs mean so much in our city in terms of even with intervention. It teaches you discipline. It's a home away from home. And so, I encourage the council, this program that she has there, to please support this, this program for her. And I want to salute everybody out here, especially my president, City Council President, because I know you're gonna say something funny about me. But nevertheless, thank everybody here. Thank you, my sister Cindy Bass, I love you, sis, and everybody else, too. Thank you.
So, to Nicole Fisher, we just want to say, keep up the good work, keeping our young people off the streets and using your profession of boxing to make sure our young people are encouraged. And a lot of times, it's an alternative for them picking up guns. And so, we want to thank you for your hard work, and also, just let Clarissa Shields know, if she's watching, that we have our own boxer, female boxer, who could take care of tasks. And so, but let's give Nicole a round of applause and good job, Cindy Bass. Got to talk to Sergeant Arms how Darryl Schuler was allowed to come and speak today, but we'll have a conversation about that offline. So, but again, thank you for your hard work, all of you for your dedication in keeping our young people safe, because that's what it's all about. Put it down.
Hi, my name is Kelly Flannery, and first, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I'm the Policy Director at Positive Women's Network, a national network of cis and trans women and gender diverse people living with HIV. Our Pennsylvania chapter has been organizing in Philadelphia for reproductive justice and harm reduction for over 15 years. I am here in support of Councilmember Brooks's resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right. On September 18th, City Council authorized a hearing on the state of reproductive healthcare in Philadelphia. Over two months later, this hearing still has not been scheduled. When affordable reproductive health services become scarce, poor and working-class families are the ones who pay the price. We need to hold this hearing in order to understand the impact of massive funding cuts and identify ways to protect access to care for Philadelphians. Under the Trump regime, our public health infrastructure has been decimated, pushing basic healthcare further out of reach for many Philadelphians. In the spring, Trump signed the largest Medicaid cuts in U.S. history into law, which will kick about 300,000 Pennsylvanians off the program. The bill also included vicious attacks on abortion providers. Since Trump took office, over 40 Planned Parenthood clinics have closed nationwide, which will lead to higher rates of HIV, as well as pregnancy-related deaths. Moreover, Republicans in the U.S. House are trying to add anti-abortion riders, defund the Title X program, and zero out HIV prevention in ongoing budget negotiations, further demonstrating the ongoing force of their anti-abortion and anti-health vitriol. When we fail to fund comprehensive, affordable sexual and reproductive healthcare, we leave pregnant people vulnerable to predatory tactics of fake clinics staffed by anti-abortion activists. These fake clinics often share false or misleading information and don't follow national medical It's essential that we are all able to access comprehensive, affirming sexual and reproductive healthcare and medically accurate information to make informed choices about our health. Abortion, like all healthcare, is a human right. The public health crisis is not coming, it is not looming, it is here. We applaud Councilmember Brooks's leadership and urge the Chair of the Committee on Public Health to schedule a hearing so we can begin to understand how to address the crisis and protect reproductive healthcare access. Thank you.
My name is Marco Guarini. I'm the Vision Zero Program Manager for the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems. I'm here today to thank Councilmember Bass for sponsoring the resolution for Ruby Bridges Day. Safe Roots Philly is the city's Safe Roots to School program. We know that students that walk to school have better attendance, that they arrive better prepared to learn. And tomorrow, students at Emlyn School will complete a peace walk as part of Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day to commemorate Ruby Bridges and her bravery integrating her New Orleans I want to thank council for honoring this event and supporting our efforts to teach Philadelphia students about the value of walking and rolling to school. This work is part of the mayor's Vision Zero goals, specifically the ones around teaching all students in Philadelphia about traffic safety. I also want to take a moment to thank Councilmember Landau for recognizing World Day of Remembrance on Sunday. It is an incredibly important and powerful event that reminds us why zero is the only acceptable number of traffic deaths.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Cole Appelman. I'm also here from the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems to thank Councilmember Bass for sponsoring this resolution acknowledging Ruby Bridges Day. For those of you who are not familiar, Ruby Bridges Day marks the anniversary of Ruby's first day at her new elementary school in New Orleans in 1960. She was the only Black student enrolled after her school recently integrated. Every single day, she had to be escorted in and out of school by law enforcement, subject to hateful jeers, taunts, and threats, but nevertheless, she kept showing up every single day. Today, schools mark the day by walking, by, excuse me, by having their students gather and walk to school, not just here in Philadelphia, but across the country. Ruby Bridges Day sits at the intersection of the ongoing fight for civil rights, the protection of our youth, and gathering in community to learn and rejoice. Safe Roots Philadelphia, as my coworker Marco acknowledged, is Vision Zero's Youth and Student Outreach Branch. They keep our students safe through education and events like Ruby Bridges Day. Safe Roots also organizes events like Walk and Bike to School Day, which happen every year, as well as organizing walking and riding school buses for our students on a regular basis. Not only does this program keep our students safe, it improves their mental health, physical health, and, very importantly, their grades. This program is one of many hard-working folks, represents a lot of many hard-working folks behind the scenes for our children's well-being, and I'd like to stand here today and give them their flowers, as well as thank Councilmember Bass once again for introducing this legislation, or, excuse me, resolution. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Obona Hagens. I'm a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor, and I'm the president of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen. I want to first acknowledge the resolution introduced by councilmembers Ketsi Lozada and Jim Harity in support of restorative justice through arts and community programs. We appreciate that vision, but restorative justice must go beyond art and education. It must also reach policy and government structure. That's why I want to highlight what our mayor, Sherrell Parker, her administration has done: rolling back race and gender-based diversity targets in city contracting, citing legal risk, and shifting national sentiment around DEI. This isn't regression, it's a constitutional correction. It proves why the Philadelphia Office of Freedmen Affairs Resolution 250781 is a necessity. This office must not be framed as DEI. It's a constitutional remedy rooted in the 13th Amendment mandate to abolish the badges, vestiges, and incidents of slavery. I want this legislative body, I warned this legislative body, two years ago, that this shift was coming, and I was labeled a xenophobe. I guess maybe now, the mayor is a xenophobe. And to our local Black businesses and business owners and advocates, this Saturday, if you're concerned about DEI, you're concerned about what everybody's talking about Donald Trump about, guess what? We have the Political Wellness Checkup at 7301 Germantown Avenue. You want to learn what the Freedmen Rights are, the progeny of the emancipated? Come to that hearing, it's free parking. If y'all want to get in contact with me, can I give my number or something out, or you can call me, 267-257-9119. It's okay. Listen, we need help in this city. The descendants of slavery are suffering, and we don't have an office in this building! That's all we need. So, look, who's going to take this to schedule a hearing? Because it's been seven weeks. It's been seven weeks. Who do I give this to? Is it Christmas that scheduled it? John Christmas? Who get, seriously, because it's been seven weeks, and this office is a necessity, and what the mayor has done proves it. Who do I give it to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250956?
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to approve House Bill 304, the Community Energy Act, and the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass this legislation to allow for the creation of community energy programs in Pennsylvania.
The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier for motion regarding Resolution Number 250956.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gortier for motion to withdraw regarding Resolution Number 250956.
Thank you, Council President. I move that Resolution Number 250956 be withdrawn.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 250956 be withdrawn. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The Resolution Number 250956 had been withdrawn. The clerk will please read the title of Resolution Number 250963.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to add metotomidine to the list of controlled substances in Pennsylvania.
Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lozada for motion regarding Resolution Number 250963.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 250963 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250967?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to 1807, 1809, 1811, 1813, 1817, 1819, 1821, 1823, and 1825 North 8th Street, located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for motion regarding Resolution Number 250967.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 250967 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240873?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 2nd Street between Roosevelt Boulevard and Ashdale Street, Champlin Street between North 3rd Street and North 4th Street, North 6th Fourth Street, North Sixth Street between Grange Avenue and Chue Avenue, Fairhill Street between Grage Avenue and Chue Avenue.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250493-A?
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Ninth Street, Erie Avenue, and Broad Street.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250830?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewall café in the vicinity of 5015 Baltimore Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19143, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a chief clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250835?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewall café in the vicinity of 1526 through 32 North American Street, Philadelphia, PA 19122, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
The ayes are, aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing November 2025 as National Adoption Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating this year's homegrown talent, including Jari Evans, Eddie George, and Eric Williams, who have been nominated and are in consideration for the Pro Football Hall of Fame class of 2026, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating the 40th anniversary of Asian Americans United, AAU, in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Pierre Robert, a beloved and legendary Philadelphia WMMR radio host and champion of Philadelphia's rock music scene, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November 16, 2025, as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Danny Garcia on his retirement and celebrating his outstanding contributions to the city of Philadelphia and the Seventh Councilmatic District, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lozada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lozada for motion on the resolution.
It is an exciting birthday.
Sorry, it's good. Happy birthday. So good, so good.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Human Rights Day and celebrating abortion access as a human right, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the introduction of the resolution, I'm sorry. Adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing November as National Restorative Justice Month and honoring the power of art, healing, and community through the collaborative efforts of the Barnes Foundation, Mural Arts Philadelphia, and Creative Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes member Harity for motion on the resolution. It's a very, very powerful exhibit that I've been a part of and participated in with Councilmember Thomas at the Barnes Museum, but most importantly, with the person that's at Phoenix, SCI Phoenix. So I recognize you for motion on the resolution.
On behalf of me and the birthday girl, Councilwoman Lozada, I move for the immediate adoption.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Inspector Frank Bachmeier on the occasion of his retirement from the Philadelphia Police Department after 44 years of dedicated service, introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Nicole Fisher for her outstanding commitment to empowering Philadelphia's youth, promoting anti-violence initiatives, and exemplifying leadership through family, faith, through faith, family, and service, introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Sidney Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the courage and legacy of Ruby Bridges by recognizing November 14 as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Sidney Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Council President, the minority has her finger up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask to be excused for important council business. May leave be granted.
Leave be granted. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I brought forth a resolution recognizing abortion access as a human right. For decades, the United States has participated in the U.N. Human Rights Council periodic review, the UPR.
Member Brooks?
Yes?
Counsel will be at ease for a minute. Can't hear you, so I gotta wait till everything kind of quiet down for a second.
Okay.
Member Brooks, proceed.
All right. Let me find my space. I lost track. Okay. The UPR is a regular assessment of a country's compliance with various international human rights treaties. Bans on abortion care have routinely been deemed as the Human Rights Coalition, by the Human Rights Council, as violating several treaties to which the U.S. has signed and ratified. Abortion is one of the driving factors of the administration's decision to withdraw this process in August. In response, All Above All and cities across the country are organizing to uphold our human rights to reproductive health care. Similar resolutions have been passed in Chapel Hill, Baltimore, Austin, and other cities. Folks will be gathering in DC in December to take this message directly to the Trump administration. Thank you to All Above All for your work on this issue. I know the vast majority of Philadelphians support reproductive health care, and right now, the Trump administration is carrying out one of the most anti-public health agenda that our country has seen. It's no surprise Donald Trump is refusing to acknowledge the damage his policies have caused, attempting to hide it from the world, but I expect better in Philadelphia. Over two months ago, the city council voted to authorize a hearing on the impact of massive funding cuts on abortion health, oh, and I'm sorry, reproductive health care. That hearing has still not been scheduled. When I say massive funding cuts, I'm referring to both federal cuts and local cuts. The federal cuts to Title X and Medicaid will be devastating effects to working families, but the local cuts were an unexpected blow to providers, patients, and advocates who make up the Reproductive Freedom Task Force. Every year since Roe versus Wade was overturned, Philadelphia has provided at least a half a million dollars in direct funding to reproductive health organizations. This was a central issue during my last campaign, but in the FY '26 budget, our city cut funding to zero. The current situation is not sustainable. Clinics are closing, misinformation is spreading. After years of progress, maternal mortality is rising. Thank you to the providers and advocates who are doing the work every day to uphold our rights, and that testified today. I will fight alongside you to make sure that we get this hearing scheduled and funding restored. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Veterans Day was, I guess, this past week, on Tuesday, cold day. I intentionally took the time out to ask my team to lighten the load so that I can spend some time on a cold day with my son. My wife also was off from work, and so she had had him at home, and I got a chance to laugh at him and look at him and let him cough on me. I also took that time to, because I took it slow, to watch a little YouTube, catch up on what was going on on the YouTube. And two things that I got a chance to look at. One, were videos of old council sessions. Back in, if you believe it or not, you know, 20, it's 2025, 2015, 2014 was a decade ago. I saw folk on... No, I'm gonna talk about it, doctor, because I saw you walk across here looking all baby-faced across the well of the chamber. I saw Member Jones sitting at this desk right here, giving commentary. I saw Member Reynolds Brown, I think she stepped out. She was over here talking. Member Squilla, sitting exactly where he's sitting now. Yes, indeed. So many folks. Member Good, I think, was sitting at this desk, often giving commentary. It was really interesting watching it, and it made me realize that there really is no reason to believe that much of what we do here will be remembered by anyone but us long after we're gone. That's not to be negative. I think it's just realistic. People not in the orbit of the political bubble that we work in don't watch sessions back every week like some, or like I did on Tuesday. So they don't necessarily remember all the minutia and the busyness that we take the time out for. The other thing that I watched that really grounded me was a Vice, a brief Vice documentary on how U.S. nuclear testing continues to haunt the Marshall Islands. There was a whole era in the beginning of arms production where the United States government was dropping nuclear bombs, hydrogen bombs, on a little small chain of islands in the South Pacific Ocean. And the continuing impact on the people that live there, the displacement, the health challenges that they still live with to this day, was something that this brief, very about 15-minute documentary really caught my attention. The Vice video calls me to reflect on past decisions and how those past decisions affect the present. President Trump recently declared that the United States would restart testing nuclear weapons for the first time in 30 years, continuing the nuclear arms race and increasing the threat of global nuclear war. He also, in that spirit, recently granted permission for a nuclear submarine to be built right here at the Navy Yard in Philadelphia. The United States, as a point of fact, holds over 5,000 nuclear weapons, most of which are more powerful than the U.S. atomic bombs that destroyed Hiroshima and Nagasaki, and which pose a devastating and existential threat to humanity, ongoing, as those who live on the Marshall Islands know. Detonation of even a small fraction of nuclear weapons would cause large-scale climate and agricultural disruption such that the lives and the food security of more than 2 billion people could be at risk. Governments have a moral obligation to use public resources... Governments have a moral obligation to use public resources for the common good. Moral societies, I believe, owe duties to future generations, not just what we do in the present moment. And investing in potential instruments of mass destruction rather than human flourishing reflects a moral failure in stewardship and priorities. Nuclear weapons create long-term environmental, genetic, and political risks that extend far beyond current generations. Their maintenance and potential use burden the future with a threat of extinction or ecological collapse. Investing in them violates the moral responsibility to protect the well-being of those who come after us. Leonard Baugh was a noted theologian, I mentioned this to Member Bass earlier, but he said that spirituality, not even religion, is about that attitude which puts life at the center and defends and promotes life against all the mechanisms of death, des- desiccation or stagnation. And so, in that spirit, I think it's important to note that public investment in nuclear weapons is morally indefensible because it violates the scarce, the sanctity of life. It misuses collective resources, perpetuates injustice across generations, and conditions peace on the threat of mass death. It is a moral obligation for the city of Philadelphia to invest in what our residents need, such as safe and healthy homes, affordable transit, working utilities, childcare, and more, and divest, I believe, from weapons that threaten life on our planet, investing not in the power to destroy humanity, but in the means to preserve it, which is the reason why I introduced my resolution today. And I hope, as we think back on council sessions gone by and how what we do, whether we remember it or not, actually affects the future, that we're mindful about the decisions that we make and the investments that we make and make sure that they are towards the common good and not taking away from life. Enough on that. Thank you, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to mention was that the first Starbucks union formed in twenty twenty-one, speaking of past actions, and over six hundred stores have since joined the union, but they're still fighting for their first contract. This year alone, the company has committed over four hundred labor law violations and over a hundred and twenty-five U.L.P. charges. To that end, Starbucks workers around the country are going on strike. That's fourteen thousand workers exercising their hard-won right to strike. Philly will be one of the main sites organizing, and that's because there's such a strong base of local coffee shops being organized as we speak. Huge shout-out to Workers United. They're probably not in the room now, but maybe if they look back on this video, they'll know that I shouted their name out. Colleagues, I invite you to join me at the North Apron today at four P.M. because Philly is the face of this national strike. And if you can't do that, I understand we've got busy schedules, but I am going to ask that you do what I'm asking everybody else, which is, for as long as these workers are on strike, you ditch the red Starbucks cups. Yeah, let them, let them go. You can't get the little teddy bear with the cap. I think them are all sold out anyway. So ditch the Starbucks cups. No contract, no coffee from Starbucks. Dunkin' is better anyway. We already know that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I think the corner store coffee in the neighborhood is better than all of them.
And it's cheaper.
We didn't got cute. Now we drinking Starbucks. Go onto the corner store. Let me stop. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Nick, will you be my representative when we open council? I want you to preach. I'm putting you on reserve for that. Mr. President, colleagues, listening audience, today I rise to acknowledge some entity within our city that often seems invisible, that often seems ignored, but is a backbone of our city, and the United Way has dubbed them as ALIS. And they are called ALIS because they are limited, what is it? They are asset limited. I got it now. Asset limited, income constrained, but employed. Access, a- 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 Long session. ALIS. And the reason they're called that is because they often earn too much to get the safety nets that we talked about in these chambers the other day. They don't get the daycare. They don't get the rent rebate. They don't get the subsidies for daycare and transportation. But the, above them, they don't get the access to the upper class. They don't see the mobility that many people fall. This represents about forty percent of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Three hundred households in the city, three hundred thousand households in the city of Philadelphia are ALIS. And they're not invisible people. They're Lopez. They're Griselda in my office that does my scheduling. They don't qualify for what we do in this chamber, but they see the benefits going to others. And I'm gonna tell you, you wanna meet them, go to aisle six at ShopRite, and they are resentful. They're resentful because they don't get the benefits of being super poor, and they don't have the access to being super rich. So they get by every year on credit card debt, not for lavish vacations, but to pay their grocery bills. And their, their hopes are dashed by the interest rates they pay just to maintain. We had a hearing here the other day talking about who should get more when. I should say it shouldn't be or, it should be and. And these people are important, too, because if you penalize them for going to work, they can't come down here and talk about public comment cuz they out of work. They have to finance their way from Wednesday to payday. They can't come down here to express themselves, but trust me when I tell you, you go to aisle six in ShopRite, they will tell you how they feel about all of this. And they're your vote, they're your voters. Those are the people that come out, and when they don't vote, it is because they don't feel that we are speaking to their needs. And they will tell you privately, or they will tell you publicly when they don't vote. I would say to you that this chamber should be their bastion of hope, that the American dream is still alive and that it applies to them, and that these programs are also, also, also for them. ALIS should not be ignored. They should be promoted because when you lose ALIS, you lose the middle class. You get the haves and the have-nots, and the have-a-littles shouldn't be penalized. I support what the Home Program said, said again. I support what the Home Program wants to do for both the poor and that middle, struggling middle class, because in my district, I represent a whole lot of them. In Phillips District, you represent a whole lot of them. In Cindy Bass's district, you represent a whole bunch of those working people that go about their business. They don't complain. They just pay their taxes. They raise their kids. They do what we all hope that every good person can do, and we want the poor to be able to do. And we need to find pathways for them to be that middle class. So I don't want Dennis the Menace in Washington cuz if you ever look at Dennis the Menace, Donald Trump is what he looks like when he's grown up, to put us against each other in these programs because we are trying to figure out how to make a dollar out of fifty cents. So I thank the mayor. I thank the mayor and her team for making sure that the ALIses among us don't get left behind. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank community members in the Fifth District for showing up to our town hall that we held last week at the Central, at the Free Library Central Branch. We were able to speak to residents about quality of life issues in their neighborhood. We talked about homelessness, we talked about nuisance businesses, and they were able to give us some, give us their feedback on how to improve their life, particularly here in Center City. Also wanna thank community residents, and most importantly, the family of L.G.P. Qua. His legacy will forever be memorialized at Knifing Clearfield. This weekend, we had the opportunity to have a street renaming ceremony there, and I hope that street sign serves as an inspiration to the youth of that community who feel like that they can't be successful when they try to be themselves. Qua stood for being positive and always being your authentic self, no matter what, and hopefully, that sign serves as an inspiration again to, to young people to, to, to be who you are and don't be afraid of being who you are, because success can come from just being just that, who, doing you. And last night, our office, along with Councilmember Thomas, hosted a twenty twenty-six preparedness meeting for residents of the Fifth Council District to make them aware of what's coming next year and how they can participate in almost the one billion dollars of economic impact that's expected for our region. So I wanna thank our host, Gerard College, and Mr. Tumor Alexander, Jonathan Todd from Philly Soccer Twenty Twenty-Six, Tyrone Dixon for the Mayor's Office of Twenty Twenty-Six, Ms. Jennifer Nagel, Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau, Patrick Sherlock from Park de Broad Arts and Business District, and Melissa Williams from the Commerce Department. As we look ahead to twenty twenty-six, it's important that every neighborhood feels included and Philadelphia is moment on the war stage, and I am focused on making sure that residents and small businesses in the Fifth District have the tools and connections they need to benefit from this special occasion that we'll have in our city. On the legislative front, today I introduced a bill that would limit hours of certain businesses along Gerard Avenue and Fairmount Avenue in the Brewery Town, Fairmount, and Spring Garden communities. This bill would also require a special exception for certain types of stores opening up in these communities, giving the community a voice in the process. As we all know, our communities have been inundated with nuisance stores where they're actually selling illegal narcotics. And I look forward to having this conversation on how we can continue to improve the quality of life for residents in the Fifth Council District with this legislation. And finally, to those watching and listening, our office has partnered with the National Center for Urban Solutions and Temple University to host a job fair, which is going on right now as we speak until three P.M. at the Leacore Center. We have close to one hundred employers there who are actually hiring. So if you're looking to change your life, to improve your life, to looking for that next opportunity, this job fair is for you. Again, it's happening right now at the Leacore Center. At Broad, it sees to be more until three P.M. I hope that everyone can meet me there. I'm on my way there now. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like a leave of absence to attend to thirty-plus Mifflin students sitting in my office.
Leave is granted, sir. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Maad.
Thank you, Council President. Today marks an important milestone in our city's ongoing fight against human trafficking, a fight that demands both compassion and courage. For the first time, this council is introducing a bill that directly addresses the rights and dignity of survivors of human trafficking. Our legislation amends Philadelphia's Fair Practices Ordinance to ensure that no one is denied employment or treated unfairly at work because they are a survivor of trafficking. Too often, survivors face barriers when they try to rebuild their lives, gaps in employment history, trauma-related challenges, or stigma that follows them long after they have escaped exploitation. While existing laws punish traffickers, they have not always protected survivors once they are free. This bill fills that gap. It ensures that human trafficking victim status is recognized as a protected class under our city's anti-discrimination law, giving survivors, survivors the same rights and opportunities as everybody else. In tandem with this local action, I'm also introducing a non-privileged resolution calling on the General Assembly of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to take swift and decisive action to pass House Bill One Two Eight Six, Twelve Eight Six. That legislation championed by Representative Young would strengthen statewide prevention efforts by requiring human trafficking awareness training for employees of hotels, motels, and short-term rental operators. It is a thoughtful bipartisan measure that pairs education with accountability, ensuring that those most likely to encounter trafficking victims know how to recognize and report it. Our local and state efforts are deeply connected with Philadelphia City Council has already invested five hundred thousand to launch a citywide human trafficking awareness and prevention campaign. Next Tuesday, we will host a press conference and stakeholder convening at the Independence Visitor Center to announce this partnership, bringing together the Office of Public Safety, Stop the Traffic, and many other stakeholders. This convening will serve as the foundation for a unified citywide strategy to protect vulnerable people, uplift survivors, and build an informed public that refuses to look away. Before I close, I also want to share that during Monday's Public Health and Human Services Committee meeting, the committee reported out a favorable recommendation of my legislation to amend the Fair Practices Ordinance to protect workers from discrimination based on menopause, perimenopause, or menstruation. And let me be frank about why these protections matter. In W.H.Y.Y.'s coverage on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, which reported on the bill's advancement, the online comment section was flooded with sexist remarks, many from men mocking the idea that menopause or menstruation deserve workplace protection. That response itself underscores exactly why this legislation is necessary. It shines a light on how stigma and ignorance continue to shape our culture and why we must ensure that no worker is marginalized or dismissed for a natural biological experience. This, this measure would make Philadelphia one of the first municipalities in the nation to codify explicit protections for workers navigating menopause and related health transitions. And we are doing it because respect, inclusion, and equity should not depend on gender or age. They are human rights. Taken together, this legisla- these legislative actions on menopause protections and human trafficking underscore what this body can achieve when we legislate with empathy and purpose. We are saying clearly, every person in our city deserves safety, respect, and the chance to thrive. Thank you, Council President and colleagues, for your partnership in this work.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce a bill calling for a temporary common sense pause on backyard breeding in Philadelphia. Right now, healthy and adoptable dogs are being euthanized in our shelter simply because there's no space. And a DNA study by A.C.C.T., which is the city's Animal Care and Control Team, found that nearly sixty percent, nearly half of sixty huskies in the shelter were close relatives, which is a clear sign that unregulated backyard breeding is fueling the overpopulation that we see today. This pause protects public health, preventing the spread of disease like parvovirus and rabies. It protects public safety, reducing the risk of attacks and the link between unlicensed breeders and criminal activity. And it protects consumers and taxpayers, shielding families from fraud and heartbreak while easing the strain on city services. Every litter means more dogs in our shelter, more costs for taxpayers, and more suffering that we can prevent. This isn't about punishment. It's about compassion and responsibility and giving our community time to stabilize and heal. If you wanna learn more about how our city manages our dog, dog population, we'll be having a lunch and learn in the near future with A.C.C.T., and we'll keep you apprised as to the date. I also wanted to go over just a couple of key points on backyard breeding in Philadelphia. And this gets real. Now, we want you to know that this is a temporary pause, and it's a breeding moratorium. This is a common sense measure, and it's trying to get to the root causes of being healthy and adoptable dogs who are dying at our local shelter because they must make room for more dogs who are coming into the shelter. The temporary pause on backyard breeding and sales protects consumers from fraud and disease and emotional distress while also saving lives and preventing the killing of adoptable and healthy dogs at the shelter. Nearly half, again, forty-seven percent of dogs share more than twenty-five percent of the same DNA, meaning that they are close relatives. Most DNA overlap for the sixty Huskies over a two-year period. Most DNA overlap was between thirty to forty percent, indicating that they were parents, offsprings, half-siblings, and cousins. This level of relatedness is four times higher than what we've seen in typical urban shelter populations. Typical open intake or urban stray dog populations usually show less than ten percent of individuals sharing more than twenty-five percent of genetic relatedness. And by contrast, in the A C C T Philly Husky sample, again, more than forty-seven percent share the same DNA, genetic evidence of unregulated backyard breeding contributing to shelter intake and overpopulation. Every litter means more dogs in our shelter, higher costs for taxpayers, and more stress on an already stretched city services. Too many backyard-bred dogs end up sick, unsocialized, or on the streets, which puts everyone at risk. Temporary restrictions help weed out these exploitive backyard operations that profit while others shoulder the burden. And this isn't about criminalizing people, it's about protecting pets and giving our community time to stabilize and heal. Puppies who are not given appropriate preventive care, like free prevention, deworming, and vaccines, spread illness in our community. One unvaccinated puppy that hasn't been dewormed several times can spread parasites in our community, which both people and dogs can catch. Puppies and dogs who have not received a minimum of two vaccines can catch parvovirus, a serious and often fatal virus that attacks the intestinal tract and bone marrow. It can live in the environment outside or inside for up to six months, continuing to make dogs sick whose owners aren't even aware of the risk. Now, in terms of public safety, we want you to know that there are all kinds of examples of the harms that uncontrolled breeding and unregulated large dog breeds can contribute. And so, as an example, in May of 2024, a fifty-two-year-old woman was attacked by three pit bulls being walked by an alleged backyard breeder. An off-duty police officer shot the dogs, killing one and injuring another, and likely saving this woman's life. In October 2023, Antonio Shaw, a non-verbal, after a series of several strokes, sixty-two-year-old man, walked into the wrong backyard where five dogs badly attacked him. In May of 2024, a man was attacked by four dogs at the corner of Fairmount Avenue, off of Fairmount Avenue. Police shot and killed one dog and injured another as they ran off. Three of the dogs looked very similar and were likely related. There's a number of other issues in terms of dog breeders where mothers are dumped, mother dogs are being dumped, being found that they've clearly had too many litters and no longer able to produce large litters. Commonly backyard-bred dogs are being found as strays with conditions such as prolapses that occur as a result of forced separation, dormating, or from a complicated birth. Very often, these breeds, as the puppies' heads are often too wide to pass through the birth canal, requiring a C-section. I could go on and on, but we all get the point. We have to do something, and we have to do something now. And so I certainly hope that we'll have the support of this body in passing this bill. I also very briefly wanted to mention we had Nicole Fisher, who's a devoted wife, mother, mentor, and champion, both in and out of the boxing ring here today. Congratulations to her for all of her hard work and her accomplishments. And also, again, we're recognizing November fourteenth as the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in Philadelphia, and we encourage you to take note and to walk your child to school. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, colleagues, and most importantly, good afternoon to our neighbors here in Philadelphia. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that this past Saturday, I joined the Scott family as they lay Cato Scott to rest. It was a beautiful tribute, a very beautiful tribute. And throughout this tragedy, I've reiterated that people of the city deserve systems that protect them, support them, and remain accountable to them. And that is where I want to focus our attention today, on accountability. I've heard from our neighbors and RCOs across the Ninth District about absentee landlords and about the lack of a responsive and frankly, responsible person here when issues arise at their property. So today, I introduce the non-resident landlord accountability ordinance. I want to be clear that we are talking about landlords that are irresponsible. We're not talking about every landlord, because many of our neighbors who live in our communities are great landlords. But there are others, irresponsible landlords, who neglect has led to blight and vacant properties across our neighborhoods, creating nuisances that hurt everyone. Over the last five years, license and inspections has reported more than sixty-two thousand housing code violations, many involving owners who are unresponsive or unreachable. That is not okay. It is unacceptable. It's unfair to the tenants and our neighbors to get calls every day about nuisance properties and about neighbors or tenants that people, councilmembers, advocates are unable to reach the owners. This legislation changes that. It requires verifiable contact information for every licensed rental property and mandates a local agent or individual within Philadelphia for any landlord who does not live in Philadelphia to be here to be a point of contact. This is about accountability for our neighborhoods. It's the same accountability and responsiveness I spoke about a few weeks ago and how important being responsive is. I want to again express my concerns about the ongoing issues that I've been having and our neighbors have been having with the Philadelphia Water Department, responsive to maintenance across the Ninth District. Can you believe, even since that speech that I gave several weeks ago, they're still not done the issue? They still have not completed the task. These concerns have been escalating repeatedly, and continued delays are unacceptable. Neighbors across the Ninth District has raised ongoing concerns about the Philadelphia Water Department's slow and incomplete restoration of water main pipe repairs, confusion of who is responsible for repairing streets and sidewalks, and a growing perception that the Philadelphia Water Department is slow to respond. It lacks proactive communication and struggles to resolve issues efficiently. This does not reflect the hard-working crews and customer service teams at the Water Department, the men and women who do the work day in, day out. However, it reflects the poor leadership of the Water Department, starting with its commissioner. This is a call for better systems as a whole. Given the magnitude of these challenges and the frustration felt by our neighbors, the nerve of the Water Department to ask for me to introduce an ordinance to change zoning to help them with some sort of improvement that they see that needs to be done. Today, I'm not introducing those ordinances until they see to it that they're going to be committed to helping our neighbors in the Ninth District return the service that they're supposed to receive the service that they're supposed to receive. I'm asking the Philadelphia Water Department to address these issues immediately, especially in East Oak Lane and Alleney, and to provide a clearer path for improvement. Our office stands ready to work with the Water Department, but I cannot and will not advance additional zoning legislation for a Water Department that does not assure its service to our neighborhoods. And I don't mind, the last thing I'll say is this on the Water Department, I don't mind making the Water Department an example of how we should hold people accountable during budget season. I think they need to be the first example of how well we do that. But that's, they have a couple more months to prove us differently. Thank you so much. The commissioner heard me.
Thank you, Member Dr. Anthony Phillips. I think I just saw the mic drop. Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulanda.
Thank you. It's a tough act to follow, Councilmember Phillips. Thank you, Council President. First, congratulations to Asian Americans United for forty years of amazing advocacy and organizing for the city's AAPI community. City Council was proud to honor this milestone today with an honorary resolution. For four decades, A A U has participated in initiatives around improving education, providing youth leadership, combating anti-Asian violence, neighborhood development, cultural preservation, and much more. And I have been proud to work with A A U for thirty of those forty years. Cheers to forty years of important service and unwavering dedication to Philadelphia. We can't wait to see what's in store for the next forty. I also introduce a resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of Pierre Robert, the beloved W M M R radio host and a champion of Philadelphia's rock music scene. For over forty-four years, every weekday, Pierre lit up the airwaves with his love of music, his energy, his self-deprecating humor, and his lasting, genuine connection with his audience. Known for championing local musicians and bands, he also had a steadfast commitment to his Philadelphia LGBTQ+ community and to support those living with HIV and AIDS, using his influence to not just celebrate, but to educate listeners. We will miss him deeply here in Philadelphia, but we know that his impact will be with us forever. I also introduce a resolution recognizing November sixteenth as World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the City of Philadelphia. I also introduced this resolution this time last year, and it's very sad to continue having to do it because traffic deaths are a leading cause of preventable deaths disproportionately harming people who are walking and biking. This year's World Day of Remembrance is organized around the theme of Remember, Support, Act. We must remember those who we lost to traffic violence, support the victims and their families, as well as emergency services that help, and act to prevent and stop further road traffic deaths and injuries. Thank you to the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia, Families for Safe Streets, Greater Philadelphia, and other partners for speaking in favor of this resolution today. And before I end, I just wanted to take one moment to respond to Councilmember Jones and his explanation of what happened yesterday with our home hearing. In my opinion, we, many of us who are advocating for a prioritization of this first tranche of funding, are not talking about pitting the have-nots with the have-a-littles. In fact, we know there's plenty of money for all. We're not also, as he's saying, making a dollar out of fifty cents. We have $800 million to spend in Philadelphia to make sure that every single person who needs safe, affordable, accessible housing has it. We just need to make sure that, especially on the front end, that we are prioritizing where that money is going in the beginning. We have a transformational opportunity here in Philadelphia to absolutely build up our middle class and to make sure that our lowest-income Philadelphians who need affordable housing so much absolutely have an opportunity to live in a place that is safe, decent, and affordable. That's all we're saying. There's plenty for everyone. There's $800 million, not fifty cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
I'm sorry, Council President, I apologize. I was just trying to make a motion to close. I thought it was time. That's my bad. I apologize, Council President. I'm sorry. I might have jumped the gun.
As there are no more speeches, the chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
I apologize for the confusion, Council President. Happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans out there, especially to those in my family. Thank you to all for your service. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that City Council stands adjourned until Thursday, November twenty of 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved in property segment. The council stands adjourned Thursday, November twenty, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you all very much.